Here.
There are six members present and one absent.
Thank you very much. And the next item is the approval of the agenda. I believe all of us have a copy of the agenda. Would, is, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
That's right.
Sorry.
Counsel member, yes.
Motion to approve the agenda.
The move is Councilmember Sullivan.
I second.
This move is seconded. I will call a vote. Hearing no objections, all those in favors, raise your hand. Close. The motion is passed. The agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero. We now come to the area of communication with council. Anyone who would like to make a statement to council, now is the opportunity to do that. You may speak on any topic that you would like that is not on the agenda, and you'd be limited to three minutes. Is there, Rick, is there anyone online?
No, I dropped three people on the other session though, so I don't, you know, they're all on now.
Scrubber.
I gave them notification we were switching, but nobody is on this.
All right. But hearing none, then we will move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda today, we have the meeting minutes, the February 13th, 2024 regular meeting, and the February 20th, 2024 special meeting. Can I have a motion to approve? Does anyone have any objection to the consent agenda? First question. Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember, this is.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
They're seconded. Councilmember Kerr. Move is seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hands. Motion is carried by a six, zero vote. Next item of business is in resolutions. The first resolution is Resolution 24, 2024-25, approving employee opt-out of family. And I'll turn it over, ask our attorney to please discuss that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the town council, Jennifer Madison, the town of Lanning. Before you is Resolution 2024-25, and that is a decision by the town to decline employer participation in and opt-out of the paid family and medical leave insurance program. I had provided an overview of the program at the last meeting on February 13th. Council provided a direction to bring back a resolution in which the town opted out of the employer portion, and employees are permitted to participate. The town would facilitate that deduction from the payroll in order to allow employees to participate. As provided by the family rules, a notice was given to employees of the town council to sit in tonight, and employees had an opportunity to provide inputs on this. I don't know if the town manager has any comments from the employees on this.
Any. Okay.
So before you is, is that resolution?
Is there any discussion? With no discussion, I'll open up the floor for any public comment on the resolution. Hearing no public comment, can I have a motion? Councilmember Keel.
I'm going to approve Resolution 2024-25, declaring the town's decision to decline and opt-out of family.
The move is there a second? Councilmember Davis.
Second.
Move, did move is seconded. Is there any debate or discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of opting out of, approving, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-25, approving the employee opt-out family, please raise your hands. Close. Motion is passed with a six, zero vote. The next is Resolution 2024-26, approving the Colorado Retirement Association contract. I will briefly speak to this, as I was involved this ever, for us to participate in the Colorado Retirement Association like we had to do with SIRS. We have to have a resolution to join the membership. That resolution is what is attached. And with that, that's the discussion of why we were, why we are having, why this resolution is on the agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? No discussion or questions? Is there any public comment anyone would like to make? No public comment with that, can I have, can I have a motion? Councilmember Sullivan.
I'm going to approve Resolution 25-26, approving Colorado Retirement Association membership.
It's been moved to seconded. Councilmember Davis.
Second.
Been moved to seconded. Is there any debate or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-26, approving the CRA contract, please raise your hands. Close, post. Motion passed, six, zero vote. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2025-27, the amendment to the account contract. And I'm going to surprise him. Dan, would you, or Councilmember Sullivan?
While we negotiated the contract and pushed back on one specific term, which was, we call it here.
Indemnification.
Yes, indemnification. After negotiation and discussions with council, we thought that this was them, and we would recommend agreeing to the, to the changes of indemnification. Do we represent them in here? Do we talk, do we have that specific wording?
Yeah.
There is some work happening that is changing. It's an accounting, you know, this is our accounting firm.
Right.
And I think in a risk, I think in the risk in an accounting firm contract, the indemnification is, versus a trucking firm anymore, some other kind of contract you would have. So I very suggest that this is should be approved.
Motion for creation?
Yes.
I just wanted to go on the record saying we're fixing Resolution 2024-27. I think it was stated that it was 2025. That's 27, right?
It's 2025, it's 2024, it is 27.
Yes.
We have a typo on our agenda.
I just wanted to.
Thank you very much. In fact, it should have been.
Oh, I.
Michael. It is Resolution 2024-27. Councilmember, here.
What does this, what does this affect? What sort of additional consequences are there for removing this special act?
So this, this provision is pretty typical in contracts, and that is because the provision really says that the, the, the person you're contracting, where the contractor would defend and identify the town for any claims related to the contractor's liability or contractor's negligence. And so there, the contractor is on the hook, and if the town were to get sued, then the contractor has to pick up attorney's fees and has to pay for any damages. And I, and I talked to folks in my office. I'm trying to think of claims where the town could get sued based on an accountant's negligence. And it's hard to think of what those claims might be.
And this was something that we had initially proposed to them, and they came back and said, no.
Right. And they have liability insurance, so if they are, if they were to make a mistake, and we had damages, or we had, we had a claim against them, the town had a claim against them, we could, we could make a claim against them for their, based on their liability insurance, and recover for their liability insurance.
But that would be separate after the town had already settled whatever the previous.
If there was a third, yes, if there was a third party claim.
Okay.
The issue with the accounting for according to them was that their insurance company, if we had that clause in there, would refuse to cover them in that case.
Okay.
That's what their objection was, I believe.
Yeah.
That's correct.
In which case, we're better off with this anyway.
We'll probably, we'd probably be better off if we had the clause in there.
Yeah, yeah, but it's minimal, right?
Risk is minimal, and the advantage of having the accounting firm quality check is.
Greatly helpful.
Okay.
Councilmember Davis.
Does this cover a X and Y?
For them, yes. But this only applies to if the town were to get sued. What is the accountant's responsibility if the town were to get sued? That doesn't get rid of the town's claim against the county.
Okay.
That's a question.
Any other, any other discussion? Councilmember Kerr.
Mayor Van Third, Attorney Madison, you had said that this is a standard clause. And so it comes as a surprise that this would be a requirement, that you pull that off.
Do you think we should be looking for somebody else?
It's, it's a standard provision in, in contracts. I'm not going to say it's the standard provision with Marquette and Weaver. I, I know that there are other municipalities who've approved working with Marquette and Weaver, don't even have a contract in place.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a blanket provision in a contract that's typically there, but people negotiate and have to have those.
And you are comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think this is a minimal risk. And I will tell you just for information for all of you, related to a town's ability, a municipal government's ability to identify, there's a very strong argument that the town doesn't have the ability to do that because of, one, tabor, and two, that it is providing credit to the other company they're contracting with, and there's a constitutional provision on using public money to provide credit to another contractor. You.
Any other discussion? Can I have a moment, please? Councilmember Sullivan.
I have a motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve Resolution 2024-27, the amendment to the account contract. Is there a second? Councilmember, this is.
I second.
Has been moved to seconded. Any discussion or debate? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-27, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the vote is six, zero in favor. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of the process for hiring the town manager. With that, I'll turn it over to our interim manager, Mr. Martires.
Thank you. So after the narrowing down process, the winding down process, we ended up with four names, which I will make public tonight, and I'll do that right now. So we have invited four interviews. John Crum, Ashley McDonald, Robert Evans, and James Mann. I've contacted all four of those individuals. They are all available, with one slight exception for, from Ashley. You recall, we have an afternoon, early evening session with the public. On Wednesday, the sixth, she has a conflict with her current employer, Town of Kremlin. They have an important work session that day. She really felt she had to be there. The water plant issue is involved. I mentioned to her that it would not affect anything. It's too bad, but you know, she can't make it, but it's just a conflict she's not going to be able to rearrange. Everyone else is free for the sixth, as well as, and all four are available on the seventh. So that's, that's that part of it. The, going back to the process again, our plans for the sixth, the open house, was to have it right here in this room. No food or anything. This is just really a chance to rub shoulders, to get down to candidates. Your planning committee on that, Ashley and, or Ashley, Maddie and I, big planning committee. We, we decided to just, just some really liked, we have water and maybe some sodas of some sort. But nothing, it's not a, not a food opportunity, it's a meeting opportunity. I notified these candidates that they'd be asked to say a few words, introduce themselves, little background maybe, and, but there'd be no other questions from the public that evening or from anyone else. So it's just about an hour and a half, we thought, six o'clock, but I'd like to get your feedback on that, is that all right? Do you want to do it earlier? And that would be for Wednesday the sixth. So any, any comments on time?
Councilmember Kerr.
Yeah, before, before we talk about time, let me understand, in the first, what, 20 minutes, each of the candidates will say something, and then what?
Then it's, it's just.
Just basically. Like a cocktail. No, not cocktails.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It's, you know, some don't see this as very important, not real, but, but, you know, I think it's nice to be able to invite the community in, and maybe they have a comment or two on, like she had known this person from another life, like he or she is brave, you know, whatever.
Okay.
But it's a nice process, but all the way, you know, we, if we didn't do it, it wouldn't be the worst thing either. But we decided to go with it, so rest of it is really mixed and mangled. What was the other question there?
Oh, that's a question, I was just going to say, I didn't go in early, but six o'clock, so that those who are working are available.
Okay. We, okay.
Wait, hold me here.
Exactly.
I think the community has, has been accustomed, customized to six o'clock for all the, for all the meetings, so.
I'm sorry, then.
For, for a year and a half, the meetings have been at six o'clock with the town hall, so it seems reasonable. I know it wasn't like that.
Good. I'll, we'll link this out on our website. And I understand Maddie is starting to take over from somebody here in the board, the social media accounts.
Wait a minute. Are you moving on to the next topic?
No, I was just saying, for, for every, I suppose, so we'll get it out as broadly as we can.
Did you receive your, your administrator, we grant, we gave, handed over administrative access to Maddie for Instagram and Facebook, and I think it works.
Okay.
Councilmember, here.
And just for the time, you were estimating an hour and a half, that's what you were making, six to seven thirty-ish?
Yeah, and the people walking around, or you know, but I, I think an hour and a half would be plenty.
Yes. Okay.
Correct. One, one question on the communication side. For all the town halls, but in the past, we've also sent out a notification via email list. And the question is, would you like to come out from the town email account? I can provide.
Yes.
I will, I can provide Maddie tonight.
Question. Is that shot?
I can provide you tomorrow morning, since it's not on this computer. And the 600-some-odd person, email, actually unique email addresses that we've sent these emails out to as well, and as we go forward. Councilmember Davis.
Do we want to put anything in the summit diary? I know there's the, this is happening, or something like that. I think we have another situation.
The public announcement.
The community events page.
Yeah.
Section of the summit day.
Okay. And the, what's that called, the cake, or the, what list are you?
It is the incorporating committee union list.
Yeah. Okay, great. So that would be Thursday. And then on, I'm sorry, Wednesday, not Thursday, the interviews. We're scheduled two in the morning, like a little break for lunch, and then two in the afternoon. I had not yet decided how to allocate those times, except for Ashley, she indicated earlier would be better for her, and since she can't make it, I'm inclined to put her earlier. We'll be making arrangements for just two hotel rooms, since Ashley can't make Wednesday evening. And John Crum is local, and indicated a different room. I'll make arrangements for two hotel rooms. And of course, we'll be paying expensive travel and all that. Later this week, very early next week, I'm working on. I, I sent you previously a whole bunch of questions that other people have used, and I'll probably pull one or two out of there, but what I'm trying to do is tailor those to what I, I feel is a good question for this suit, you know, for this city, for this town, I should say, at this time. So I'll be trying to weed out those questions. There might be a couple individual questions for each of the candidates. For instance, the one that had to water three of those questions about, you know, that, that person would continue practicing. We'll have that included, and you'll get those prior. I'd like to try to get them out by Monday next week later, so you'll have that. Probably forgetting something, but that may be all I have right now.
And a question, Councilmember Sullivan. So the questioning, have you thought about actually how that process works? Where I'm sure the candidate would sit there, and then we would all be here. Would you be with these questions that you have? Are you suggesting that you use the same question for all candidates? Do we go interactive? How do we handle that?
Yeah, well, first of all, yeah, I'd say use the same questions for each candidate. That way you get to really compare how each one is responding to these questions. And try to remember some of those key ones for yourself, you know. Do you beat your dog? No. Okay, well, that's good, you know, that, if somebody says yes, then there's a difference. But the, and how you ask them, that's a good question. Do you want, I mean, usually on panels, everybody has a chance to ask a question. So unless you want just the mayor or somebody else to ask the question, I would say, listen, everybody gets. You probably only get one each, or if somebody's going to get a couple, probably no more than 10 questions. And then the special questions, where we focus in on, and there may not be a special question for everyone, but that example I used a moment ago would be a good example of where there would be an extra question in line, or law matter. I get into the questions, or?
Yeah, well, I think that's what I'm thinking, is that we probably all have one question, and then at least somebody was bringing up the idea of like, well, there might be an obvious follow-up.
Yeah. I think follow-ups are great, and, and maybe at the end, if somebody scores into that interview, you know, something, something they highly answered one question, you know, triggers a thought about another question. So I think it's always good to have a little time built in at the end to take care of those, those other questions, and there's nothing wrong with that, obviously not. Each candidate is going to get the same other question. But, but you're trying to probe into that individual in front of you at that time. So, yeah, those I think are in play, they're fair to do, and I think I encourage you to think, answer the initial question.
And you'll facilitate kind of moving down.
Question be happy to give. And Councilmember Davis.
If as we review the resumes and letters, we have questions that occur to us over the next few days, should we send them to you? And you can, as far as I'm concerned, you can determine whether that needs to be asked or not, but just, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, so if something came up that's important, yeah, I.
As our, as we, yeah. I mean, my plan is to review the, they, all of the written work over the weekend, and just, if I think of something, can I send it to you as a question, I guess?
Yeah, and you're saying before the interview.
Yeah, just as you're highlighting your question.
No, that, that's great. That would be helpful with that. I thought you were talking about after the fact, if something came up.
No.
Yeah, no, okay, okay. Well, if, if something did, I mean, if it was important, maybe we really need a follow-up with another question, I would say, full filter that, excuse me, to me, and I'll go, I'll go make a phone call to get that answered.
And, but if someone in reviewing a particular resume comes up with a question that they would like to accept for a particular candidate, would that, the time to ask that question be during what I'll call that ad hoc session at the end?
Yeah, I think that's right. Yeah.
How long do you believe we will, we should be speaking? Set, how long do you believe we should set aside for each candidate in that process on the, on Thursday?
I think like an hour and 15 minutes. An hour, you, you've all been through this before. An hour of Q and A with an applicant, it's, it's seemed like a long time. But you'll have a few more minutes for the, those other questions that we've been talking about. And if we get done a little early, that's okay, you have a chance to, you know, return phone calls or check emails or whatever.
So, so also then, if a session runs a little bit over, another candidate starts to come in, then we would perhaps have the candidate seated in the library and.
Yeah, Maddie and I can work that out. We'll be, maybe watching for the next candidate. We'll shuffle he or she off to the side somewhere. But, of course, they will, they will all have met the night before, except with, with Ashley. But I'll make sure they understand when they come in to check, check in down the hall, so they don't come walking into the room here.
And this will be considered a public meeting? So it will require both, the Wednesday night and the Thursday, we will require public notice, be posted in the book, as well online. Will they vote, will they be broadcast and streamed? What are your thoughts? They don't need, right?
No.
Councilmember, here.
I think the interview should be 100%. The Thursday deal, I think, should be on Zoom or Teams or whatever we're using. I think that Wednesday night might be really awkward and difficult to do what is essentially a, a field. I don't think that would add value, but I would say the interviews, for sure, we should. I mean, why should it be any different than any of our other meetings?
If somebody has that, it'd be great.
And I gather there's consensus, can I add? Then, and Mr. Kerr, I would ask you to consider where you're going to put your owl at that event, since we will have a person sitting probably about where the owl is for the interviews. I'm not sure if the best way to do this, but you are a smart guy. Councilmember.
And if we're going to Zoom this, I assume that means we want to post it. And if we're going to zoom this, I assume that means we want to post it, the video online. Question would then be, would we be open to feedback from the community if they see that after the fact? And how long would we keep that on air after the decisions of the mayor? What do you recommend?
Is there a statutory requirement for audio of public meetings?
I think, I mean, I think if you're, if you're taking the audio, I think you've got to keep it for I mean, I think for a long time.
Seven to 10 years.
You better get that heads up.
Hello. Is there any other, any other comments or suggestions or concerns? And then we will, after the conclusion of the interviews on Thursday, we will take the weekend to consider what we heard. And then on the regular council meeting on the 12th, we will go into the executive session to consider negotiation of contract. And then as part of that process, end up with a end up in a position to come out and make a vote on selection of a candidate. Am I correct? And that's what we're processing for?
Yes, well stated.
So we would be, so hopefully on the 12th, we would have a candidate selected. Do the then enter into a negotiation process for the town manager's contract. And then depending on where we are on the bill of grant, we're then, if we can't sign that contract until the grant contract dollars are in place. But we can do some other things if we have to in the interim. We've then had probably have a town manager in place by mid-April. Give you a condition of the timeline if that makes sense because acceptable everybody.
Good summary.
What?
Good summary.
And then we can finally hear room or interim town.
I can't wait to get kicked out that door. That's not true.
You'll be there.
All right. Is there any discussion on that?
Done for me.
All right. The next item is the report of the town manager staff. Do you have anything?
I don't have.
Oh, this is a matter of fact, we have three, three agenda items.
From the So the first is the discussion of membership and representation in countywide, regional, statewide organization. I'm going to make this one short tonight. I will bring back for maybe the next meeting a full list of anything I can think of that council members are asked to serve on. But, you know, quick, you've got chambers of commerce, you've got transit board, housing authority, council of government, CML, and there are more. So I guess I'd ask you to start thinking about ones that you feel strongly about, that you'd like to serve on. And if there's, and I know I'm missing some here, but if you have others you want to make sure you covered, send them to me right away. But I'll come back at probably the next meeting on that and we can make some decisions about where you're going to be spending some, some more of your time.
And can I make the recommendations? And that would be that you would send out to the council members that list prior to the meeting?
Yep.
As soon as you have, because I expect that it will be fairly extensive. And there's not a requirement for a council member to be part of the body, but highly encouraged. And eventually, I believe, as talent progresses, we will see the town staff picking at moralist records with additional roles and us picking advice. But for now, we have a urgent need up in that area.
Yeah.
And any, any comments or discussion on, on our interim managers' presentation there? Next.
I'm going to, well, why don't we just take these in order, Mr. Mayor? The next one is discussion of communication updates to the community. And why don't we start with the Keystone incorporation committee list? You mentioned this earlier. Let's mention it again.
Yeah, let me discuss that briefly.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, there's, as I mentioned, 600 and some odd unique email addresses on that list. Oh, this is the note. Full-time residents, registered voters, non-registered voters, second homeowners, business owners as well, that anyone who's signed up. I would propose to turn that over to the town from the incorporation committee for town, for town management in the future. I would like to, hopefully there won't be an objection from council other than for this first communication which needs to go out quickly, I would like to go out to all those members and ask if anyone has objection to having their email turned over to the town. I have any objections. I just want to be transparent with them in that process. And then all future communications going out to that email list would then be a town responsibility. And I've been very hesitant on the incorporation committee deciding to do any communications since the town does it. That's member Davis.
Do we, I would like to suggest that we continue coordinating as we have town meetings and people attend and add into that what is more interesting.
Is it possible to move on to the town website, a link someone could click to be added to the communication list?
Yes. Can happen.
And you get ads probably about every week, week and a half of the process?
Actually, it's about, you know.
Very valuable. Council member two.
On the same line, is it worth having a place where people can write when they come in? They want to take a sample sheet out there.
Maybe my, oh.
Or when people show up for our meetings like this, we want to have their in-person.
I said, I'll ask the town manager this, that question. Shouldn't we be having a sign in sheet where people come to the meetings? Where we have their list, their, you know, name, where they're from.
And, you know, we've done that in the past, especially for folks that intend to add some, to make a testimony on a bill or, you know, what have you. But I don't think it's a bad idea to ask everybody that comes into, not mandatory, of course, but leave your name, contact information.
If there's a disclaimer on there that if they give us their email address, we'll include them in the communications. Eventually, the town's going to have to come up with a method to allow someone to unsubscribe. The incorporation committee wasn't quite that generous. If we got an email, they would take ours. Since we're town, we don't have a choice. All right, any other questions?
And the last for me then is
Before you move on, if you're still on communications, the incorporating committee also has a website, the incorporate, the incorporate Keystone website. We would like, the incorporation committee would like to wind down that website and make, and have all of that focus now go to town, then the incorporation committee. And what I'd like to ask, if there's no objections from the council, is for the town staff to look at that website, the information on that website, take any information off that website. They would like to, there's probably some time, and excluding 60 days, that website would disappear. Acceptable, everybody? Is that something you'd be comfortable doing? Your staff pick up doing?
Yeah, yeah.
We're getting out of business. Next item of the discussion then is discussion of financial processes. The town manager.
And just to pass that back before I go forward here, for all those people from the public that are here tonight, thank you for coming. The town Keystone isn't going to ramp up having every department in house immediately. And one of those is we don't have a finance office, but we have an outside firm that we discussed earlier, Marketti and Weaver Associates. And they will be our, essentially our finance office. And I just wanted to tell you how things are going so far with Marketti Weaver, and I expected nothing less. They're an excellent firm. I yell at them in the other life. And Matty and I spent some time on our rep, Beth, whatever her last name is now, Beth for now, believe. Last week, we have some documents that needed to get done with the banks and so they could go to the bank, see what resources we have and so on. That's all going well. The process for paying bills was sort of ironed out. So our staff will have the ability to order certain things and then code that product, whatever it is. Let's say Lindsay needs to buy a computer. He'll, he'll code in purchase of Lenovo computer, whatever. That gets uploaded to Marketti. Marketti then takes those on a regular basis. We talked about every two weeks, I believe. We'll send those back and I have a chance then to review those to make sure we don't have any problem orders or things going out that don't need to be there. The town manager then approves that. Marketti then, their process goes to work and they pay out. Everybody's happy. Also related to that, with Marketti, but also Paylocity, we are, and Elizabeth Cox from the human resource office, we're all set up for payment, the first checks to employees. Our one employee, Matty, we'll do, we have other employees there, our one office employee will get paid on time on March 8th. She's happy about that as well. And then if I can get, I have, I know your names, I know your email addresses, but I don't have everybody, Matty, Matty does. Do you have the phone numbers for everybody?
Not.
So if you could just, before the night's over, give me your phone numbers. I need to get that to Elizabeth Cox tomorrow. So that's, that's one of the final pieces of getting the council paid. You're whopping huge salaries. So you'll get a payment as well on the, on some pro rated basis. But then I just wanted you to know, and this is just in the coffee, there's no memo, just that things are going well and that. It looks like it's, it should work really fine. The only difference, they're not in house, but probably doesn't work much different if they were. So it's going, going smoothly.
Any questions? Well, this is your opportunity to get paid, so just give you your information. And with that, the next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor and council. First, I'm going to ask council member district, council member Davis, to give us a brief report of the Senate Committee of Health and Health Authority. Your opinion.
You want to start? Yes. So Gretchen and I consistently get, attend the Housing Authority meetings. They graciously allow us to generally, it's town manager who attends, so we're usually in attendance with everyone on the board, which includes people from the housing authority and then the town manager's jurisdiction. That has been a load of number. We did offer the resolution that we passed at one of our previous meetings requesting membership into the housing authority. And the response that we received was that perhaps it might appear on future agenda. So we're not entirely sure what that indicates. We're hopeful we're going to continue to attend housing authority meetings. Did have a conversation after the meeting, we're coming to the board, giving her some background as to why town council members were attending in lieu of our town manager, who's an interim town manager and consumed with the interviews right now. Because the town, town council members provide continuity, meeting to meeting. And she's seen the meaningful to that. And I'm not sure if there was any other detail you wanted, but that was really the highlight of the meeting.
So they're basically aware that it was a unanimous decision to join and evolve in their court at this point.
Do they have a discussion right now? All right, I have one item I'd like to bring up, and that is according to the town charter, if someone is absent from the, if council members absent from the town council in person, a, the excuses either classified as the excused absence or an unexcused absence. If the council member has three unexcused absences in any year, that council member is subject to sanctions, including up to, including removal from the council and remaining to the council members. Normally, those items, that whole process would be covered in our bylaws. We do not have bylaws yet. And so I would like to propose till we get bylaws, the following process. We've had our first council member been absent is absent, and I believe we need to give that council member an excuse absence. But the process I would propose, as the mayor, anyone that's going to be absent would contact me, provide the reason of why they're, why they're asking. I would make an initial decision of excuse or unexcuse. I would then put that onto the consent agenda. And if anyone just agreed with that, they could then ask that I'd be removed from this consent agenda and to have that item discussed among the entire council for decision. I made that, I made that proposal just because I think it would streamline the process a little bit and, and reduce a lot of time on, could be really routine excuses. And then the second piece would be, we need to get on with the council bylaws. Is that approach acceptable to you?
Streamline, Mark.
Yes.
All right, then.
Question.
Yes.
Do you want this in writing or you want it, or is there a version?
I want an email. I want something in writing. Yes, council member this.
I hope you look over, which contains your information or the other one. But I just wanted to go on the record as saying that the town council was aware of Aaron's absence. So this, although we don't have a process, he was very diligent about notifying us in advance.
I couldn't go into this.
Okay, sorry.
All right. The, in the case of council member permits absence, he's, he's absent from the area from February 21st to March 10th. A trip to, a pre-planned trip to Asia, a pre-planned, I believe, a back country, I mean, as well associated with that. I consider that absence excused. And so my recommendation is that would be considered excused absence by the council. Is there any further, can I just have a thumbs up and we'll just handle that first? Council member Currie.
If there's an illness or something else that comes up in the council members' life, is zooming in or team's participation is considered being here at the council?
No, it is not. No, it is not. The charter is very specific on that. Charter requires in-person attendance or excuse. However, that doesn't preclude us from concluding that that is an excused absence and giving credit for excused absence. Did I get that right, by word?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, council member Davis.
So the recommendation would be that if that person is available and can zoom in or zoom in, that would be ideal.
That would be ideal if they can. We were hoping, we may be able to test out how that would work in the future. What I would prefer to see would be if someone is not here present, that there, they would be picture that would be, we'd be sitting on the screen and we could incorporate that in the discussion as we go. and we could incorporate that in the discussion as we go.
But that would not be considered participation in the council.
That would not be considered.
So they can't vote.
That would not, well, they can vote. But that would still be, that would not be, that would not be, that would be considered an absence of in-person attendance. And that was specifically addressed in the charter.
That's correct.
With the intention.
Yes.
Question, is it some information?
Who were you making, who were you suggesting?
I'm not answering your question, but the charter's intent was to attract some council members who had the intent of being present and meaning they're not being asked from the county.
Naturally. How about, there are times we do not want a sick member of council to be here.
But that's why, if you go in advance, you would, if the, like, if the council member, Parment's case, you do an advancing, we're meant to request in advance, we handle it in advance. And it's all taken care of in the case of a sickness, that you would come in and you couldn't attend because of sickness last minute. You'd notify us as quickly as you could and then we'd consider that and determine whether it's an excuse or an unexcused absence. In most cases, it'd be excuse. I can't imagine it wouldn't be. And if anyone in the council disagrees with chair's determination, then you bring that out of the consent agenda, the council discusses it and makes a determination. But the requirement is in-person attendance or excuse. If you're three excused, you may be removed from office at the council's discretion. Any other questions on that? Councilmember Davis? Matty?
Next.
All right, and. Then, Councilmember Keel.
Question, not on that, but what is the process for us to start the bylaw? Since you mentioned, I think we have a couple of minutes. What's our next step there?
We can request town attorney to develop the bylaws and the council rules.
Yes, I can do that and I can bring it to you, the draft. Similar to like how we did with the planning and zoning commission ordinance with some questions and length for feedback.
I mean, I'd like to see that sooner rather than later, if it's possible.
And does everyone agree on that?
Yes.
I would also like to request that you come back to us with a list of those things that we should be doing, that we are not doing, and we may not know that we need to be doing. I would rather have you identify it for us than find out who you didn't ask. Yes?
Yeah, I was just going to mention the same. I think Matty and I and Jennifer need to sit down, go through all those things and maybe try to even suggest the priority of the party. But I hear bylaws, law and clear need to move up.
But I agree with you. I think I believe we need a priority of those and lay out a projected schedule for when you would see those addressed in the future council budgets from a planning standpoint would probably help everyone.
We can do that.
And I believe one of those priorities ought to be planning and zoning, planning and zoning and land use code issues. Getting those addressed quickly. Councilmember Keel.
Can we back that up with a work session as well whenever we, so we can discuss if starting going to their.
Yeah.
Whenever that, or did that seem to be on the 12th, or the 26th, or the 9th, or whenever?
I think the planning purpose is considered, unless canceled, as a work session associated with every council meeting. And then the town manager can make a decision whether to cancel that work session or not if they don't have anything planned.
And just an observation, the work session today, you're first. You guys are a bit of old hands at this now, being on the incorporation committee for a couple of years. But that was a perfect example of a work session. Good issues, good back and forth on some of those points. It was the way, exactly what work sessions are designed to do, so good work.
Any other items?
Either we can do this under other matters or we can take a half step back. Lindsay is here. I just wondered if you might not mind hearing just real quickly from him, going back to our agenda this afternoon on planning and zoning, how many members, how many alternates, which some unnamed person got wrong, but we'll talk about it. But would you mind taking a couple of minutes just to get his two cents on that, with that area?
I'm very amenable to that. Is there any objection? To that, I'll throw it more over to Mr. Hurry.
So I already talked about this, but since he talked about a number of planning commission members at the county level, the ability to get them, how many, is it easy to get new members, members with.
So they're all.
Alternates? And anything else comes your mind?
I'm going to do for the record your future community development director. Basically, I've worked with, for the county, I've been working for the county for 29 years and their setup is divided as, then we made, we have basins. What that transpired to is over 56 planning commissioners. That is a lot to handle now from the administrative standpoint, from a decision standpoint. A standard basin planning commission was made up of seven regular members and two alternates. To address Gary's concern or question, we did use those alternates fairly often. And they did show up, and even if we had the full membership, they added some value, they just couldn't vote. So that's what the county did, seven regular and two alternate.
What's your recommendation?
About 56. Seven, nine, a little bit of alternates, see how it goes. Again, it's going to be one of my first charges is to pick up the phone and have this conversation with Jennifer and Gary. But I think a seven member is appropriate for the size of this town. And it appears that the interest is quite high. When I've seen over nearly 30 years, it's waned. And I don't really know why it has, but basically what you're telling me is probably because of the the interest in the new town. We got a lot of people looking at it. I think that's one. I'm guessing membership won't be a problem. I think it'll be more probably from selecting the right combination of people. And that is important. I'll give you some advice, reverse of that as well, if you want.
So let me add something. In this afternoon's discussion, we talked a lot about qualifications. And either mandatory qualifications or desired qualifications. I think the consensus was pretty loud and clear, no qualification, except that, you know, you gotta come in here and follow the rules and not vote.
Have you looked within the boundaries of the town?
No.
This is different, okay.
So when you wrote the charter, we wrote that it was to be a majority of residents, but that we could, that we allowed for other people.
Certain stipulations on how far.
They have to attend the meetings, but it's, it allows people who's put in there, predominantly through a combination of second homeowner population, which is a huge population here in Keystone, to allow them to participate in the town.
We kept the majority with residents.
Yeah.
But yeah, we have the situation.
Key business owners, people like that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And one of the challenges we have in Keystone is very few. I only know of one business owner in Keystone that actually lives in Keystone.
A lot.
You live at work.
A hundred feet, actually, from that.
You know, I look very forward to how they turn this over. Again, I'm going to jump right into the reverse of that and get that rolling.
Can you address what you'd like to see in the selection process? The application, or is there an application, what, and what kind of questions you would suggest?
Well, that's kind of too bold. I envision, if we're going to advertise, going to pay, verge, garnish some more interest, get a selection of people and then look at what they do and how long they've lived. And then I would very likely supply you with a list of relatively short questions oriented towards their views or the way they look at things from a group perspective, typically, a mastermind perspective. So I will not let you sit there and struggle, I promise. I will give you some questions and you can certainly maybe learn in a work session and work on those questions. But I've been doing this for a pretty long time. I think I can weed out people for you, but get you a good group of diverse people that will give you good representation.
You got a question? One question. For selection of the head planning and zoning commission, is that normally elected by the planning and zoning commission or is that appointed by the county?
The way the county is done, it's, the planning commission is similar, less their own, kind of the chair and vice versa.
Anything else?
No, great. I'm glad we had this answer. And I don't remember alternates. Too likely, but that's all right. We now have corrected the rest. Thank you for coming this evening.
You're very welcome. Thanks, folks, for doing this. If you want to be a planning commissioner. I'll talk to you, you know, let's go away.
Thank you. I have nothing else.
And Lindsay, I'd like to thank you for taking the time, first, for coming to all of our council meetings.
I'm excited about it. You're in.
I think we are all excited to have you.
Yes.
And your experience of joining the, joining the town staff as we continue on this fighting journey. We're all on in the next few years as we stand up this newest town in Colorado. So if anything else, Mr. Town Manager?
None for me.
Does any member of the council have any items they would like to bring up?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Davis?
We've received an email from CML regarding HB 24, January 11th, of the ADU proposed legislation. Within that, and this may or may not apply to us, council members that's done a little further research. I just read the stuff from CML. But one of the suggestions was that, that as a town, we that we provide a resolution opposing this legislation, since it basically takes decisions out of the hands of municipal government, including parking. And I would want it for us to at least discuss and consider taking some action. If it's not today, this may be something we want to put on a future agenda, but.
Oops. I should have been prepared.
So is this on a legislative action? Is it an actual bill or is it proposed coming out of committee?
It's somewhere in the committee area.
Okay, so we have some time.
Do you have any further information?
Well, it's working its way through the legislature. It is something definitely that CML is very, they're focused on, they're watching it. And just as another data mentioned, I mean, one of the, one of the big issues is whether or not you agree with the philosophy or the policy of the bill of allowing ADUs, is that the state is really taking away authority from local governments to do their own planning and to do what's best for their jurisdiction. And particularly a home rule. That's one of the main reasons why there's opposition.
I'd also like to note that the bill also has exempted many of the mountain communities from its provisions. Personally, I don't believe that should deter us from taking a position on this because of the impact on our prerogatives as a home rule town. Councilmember Davis?
I absolutely agree with that. One of the, part of this would run with our ability to manage our parking in this area. I guess that is almost as concerning as some of the other.
And again, that was one of the specific items that we were exempted from.
Yeah.
But the question is, it's been pointed out in the news articles on this item that could be revisited in a new year, certainly now that we're finding ourselves in the same position as, what else?
I also think it's important as new members to support issues like this.
And so consensus?
I'd like to actually read it and do some research on it. Well, we got it a few days ago. Actually, I wrote on it though.
Well, we're not voting on it. What we're doing is first discussion.
Okay.
And then the question is, we can direct staff to write a resolution for our consideration, at which point we can then have a complete discussion of the issue for that. Is that acceptable, council?
Yes.
Then, town manager, could you please put it on your agenda to develop a resolution for approval? And I respect that needs to be next council meeting, given that the legislative session ends in May. And we would rather have this, we'd rather at least get our voice heard. Anything else? We have coming up next summer or June, the CML annual meeting. I've sent the information on that out to each of the council members. We can fund it in the budget. Probably add funding for the entire council go as the educational opportunity would like to. And I guess I'm curious, how many members would like to go?
Me, probably.
I'm unable to go. Anywhere, child. If I would like to go, I would be unable to.
They did plan it, I only consider six.
Is that an excuse?
As a matter of fact, those will actually be, I believe, those will probably also be actually be declared public meetings during the entire time we're at the CML and the conference. Because we will be having opportunities to get together and talk. So if anyone wants to come to the conference and follow us around, they can listen to our conversation and participate. Did I get that right, Town Attorney?
Yes. Will there be other training opportunities throughout the years that from their annual meeting? I mean, for instance, I can't attend that either. I'll be out of the country.
Yeah, kind of.
And I'm so sad. But I would like to attend any and all. I mean, I'm happy to take on my own, but we'll be made aware of that.
Then there are, yes, there are other opportunities. I'm not sure if it's through CML, I'm sure there are. But there's also other opportunities through Colorado Association of Ski Towns where they will have sessions that we can attend as well. And those are normally one-day type sessions versus CMLs.
It's like three.
Three days. Then I would, also for the council, can I get a thumbs up that we agree that the town will pay for attendance of anyone who likes to go? And town manager, would you please determine who on the staff should be considered for attendance as well? If anyone, your choice.
Yeah.
So we just get it from a rough head count. So it appears that. So it appears that council member listed and council member Keel are not going to be able to attend, so the max attendance from the council would be about five. I would also recommend that you all, if you're planning on attending, make your hotel reservations. And we need to get our credentials so we can log on to the CML website and figure out how to do that. So, too, I will take an action to deal with, get a hold of the CML executive director and ask him how the council gets access to the website so we can make reservations. Because you can't make a reservation without getting access to the website. I try. And I have an answer for you for this, Andy.
Okay, another question about the schedule, since it's almost March, well, hard to clarify, April meetings be up?
There, the April meetings are, all of our meetings are the 2nd and the 4th Tuesday of every month?
Well, April is just a little different. So the 9th and 23rd. I just want to clarify because April is a little different for you.
In fact, I think there's an extra week in April. 2nd, 4th, 4pm, 7pm. And we can follow the same pattern every month until we have rules and decide to change it.
Yeah, so it looks like the 9th and 13th won't be there.
Hey, I'm CML from Oakland at the annual conference. Maddie checked or something, but the conference hotel settled out like in 20 minutes. So I think CML suggested several other. So if you needed the information, I think we have it here. You may already have it yourself.
I sent everyone a copy of the CML communications. And hopefully I can get a hold of the executive director and get information on how we can get an opportunity to make a reservation.
Okay, I guess we can, why don't we check into that?
I could send the other hotel options, which we can send.
They're on the email that we sent out to everybody.
I'll re-read it then.
They're in the bag. Any other?
Beyond a little bit beyond where we're talking about, but you had Mr. Hirsch provide his thoughts on the planning and zoning commission makeup. And that would be changed from the direction that you provided to me, the seven and two alternates. I'm just wondering.
Consider that direction. Am I right? Because I believe that the direction was actually, the town manager, when Mr. Hurry came on board, could make adjustments that it went along with the agenda when he wrote it. All right, any other? All right, Karen, we do not have an executive session scheduled for today. And with that, with no other business, I would like to declare this meeting adjourned at 8:15. We got through her, but...